Well, for common, we delayed a little bit getting started so that it would be less of a problem for the candidates' time because we promised them a lot of people and we have some people now, so that is a good thing. So, I'm Rob Ringler and I am the current president of Crystal Falls HOA. My term runs until December 31st and let's see what happens after that. I have another year on the board, so we'll know what's gonna happen with that. So this election, correct me if I'm wrong, candidates, this election came about because of a resignation of one of the city council members who is leaving office to run for something else, and I don't remember what that is, but something else. So there is an open spot. These are your candidates for that, county commissioner?
Correct.
You know, I've said that before and I did not have the confidence to go with that. So these are your three candidates. The early voting period starts on Monday, the 20th, runs through Sunday, the 2nd of November, and the actual election day is on the 4th.
Friday, 31st.
Halloween.
Really?
Halloween, yeah.
No weekend voting?
There is in the middle.
In the middle. Okay, thank you very much. So, without further ado, I'm gonna introduce you to my better half, Marie Ringler, and she is going to be the emcee for tonight. She has the questions and you probably all saw the ground rules, but the ground rules are questions have not been seen by the candidate, so they are unaware. They get two minutes to initially introduce themselves, talk about their platform, and then we'll start the questioning. We have a bunch of questions here. If we have time at the end, we run out of questions, we'll take questions from the audience as well. One minute for each of the candidates to respond to the question asked, or if somebody wants to rebut anything, 30 seconds per person, but it's just one round of rebuttal, so you can't rebut the rebuttal. And we should have plenty of time with only three candidates, so hurry.
Yeah. So this is network test vote, too? Our acoustics are not ideal here, but if we have to go without it, we can. First of all, we wanna thank all three of these citizens of our city for investing time and money and energy and wanting to run for this office. So we are very grateful that you are doing that. So we can only imagine that you have a vision and we wanna hear who you are. Test Rob, two, three. Our microphone is not working tonight. We're gonna do without, we're a small group. We care. Here are the people that care about what's going on, they care about this community, we've seen tremendous growth, and we are grateful for each one of you. So Anna, is it Anna or Anna?
It doesn't matter.
Anna Yalan, just be first, stand up and be bold about who you are and why you're running.
So, good evening, Crystal Falls. My name is Dr. Anna Yalan, and before we start, I should bring the warning label. It says, "Strong accent ahead." Because, you can recognize, I have an accent. But not just accent, I have my master's degree in J physics and PhD in finance and also in BA. So with my education, I like have the tools to perfect our city, to make it more beautiful, to bring quality of life for our community. I am just one candidate who right now serve in city committees. I'm commissioner in Public Art and Culture Committee and also Historical Preservation Committee and for couple other ISD advisory boards. So, three my goals, very clear and very simple. With my education in J physics, I want to help our city to solve water problem issues and plus be prepared for any natural disasters. Also, I want to make, I want to make sure each dollar spent, and of course, we need our safety. And it's about like, my third goal is safety. We have to have fully funded first responders, responders, fire, and police department. So, this is my goals, this is my background, and with my experience and expertise, I would love it very good. City Council.
Thank you, Anna. Muhammar Sheri, please be next.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. My name is Muhammar Sheri, and I'm running for Leander City Council, place three, because I believe Leander deserves transparent leadership, balanced growth, and a council member who serves. So who am I? I was born in southern India. All my education was in Christian missionary schools and colleges. Came to United States in early 2000s with two things, hope and couple of bags of clothes. And I'm incredibly thankful for two things in life, God and this country, which has given me tremendous opportunities in every sphere of my life. And I feel thankful for that. Now, presently, I'm a director with Fortune 3 Company, leading multi-initiatives, which are multi-million dollars impacting millions of American lives. I'm also a successful business owner. I'm a proud member of Leander and Cedar Park Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a community servant, serving on the boards of Leander Educational Excellence Foundation as well as Cedar Park Public Library Foundation. My campaign is built on making Leander strong, boldly leading it. My priorities are local economy, public safety, and smart growth. And I'm humbled to say, on each of these lanes, I'm endorsed on each of those lanes by Leander Law Enforcement Association, Austin Business Women, as well as the notable public dignitaries. I will leave you all with this. I became a United States citizen by choice, not by chance, and I promise, and we all know what promise means, and I promise to leave Leander the same way, by choice and by conviction. Thank you all.
Navi Blair, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Natomi Blair, and I'm running for Leander City Council. Primarily, that is based off of my rearing in service. I'm a native Texan, been in the area for at least 19 years. I was reared in military background, my father served in the army, and I had a mother who served 15 years in public education. They now are both parishioners and served in ministry for the last 20 years. So my life has been reared on service and servant leadership. I am running simply for this, because I know that our city is in a transitional state. We have a lot of growth, we have a lot of love and support for that growth, but we want it done in the right way. And this is the time where we need a servant leader that understands and has the skillsets of transformational leadership. I've led in various organizations over the course of my life, including being a part of a tech company and servicing Fortune 250, Fortune 200 companies. So I understand that building with a business acumen, having a master's degree as an MBA, that is important and it's vital for you to have the key skills and professional experience to run this race. But more importantly, I have the notoriety and support and endorsement from many of our local city leaders, from the Leander Firefighters Association, from the Home PAC, as well as from our neighboring city, Cedar Park Mayor Jim Perryman Moran. The reason I have leadership across the board, including from our Leander Independent School District, is because I also believe that in order to be a true leader, you need to first be on the ground running, understand what needs to be done, and also execute with a network or a team of people to get that job done. And so I have built my life of service when I came to the city of Leander, doing just that, serving on PTA, working in Leadership Independent School District Leadership Program, serving on the DEWIT Committee. Why? Because it's important for you to be involved and part of it at the ground level. What do we wanna do for the city of Leander? Well, as I walk the neighborhoods, I see that the biggest priority, of course, is water. So it's really important key that we have an understanding of where our water is, and people want to be involved, invested, that it's not necessarily an issue that we have to deal with, but we're collaborating together as a committee, as a community, thinking, as a community and as a group of people. And my other tenets include things such as how do we focus on our infrastructure and economic development? I have the business and professional acumen to do that and have created the alliances that are necessary. Most importantly, though, is that I wanna make sure that we continue to be a community. This is not an agenda about me, this is an agenda about we. What can we do as the citizens of Leander to ensure that we're shaping our future like we see sister cities do, and we're not overrun by our group? Thank you so much for your time, everybody.
I don't think we've ever seen three candidates that have more depth of background in terms of education than contribution before. We're gonna go through the questions that have been submitted. First one, I'm gonna combine two. What do you see as the primary role of the Leander City Council? And the other one, I think goes within, what do you think have been the greatest challenges over the past few years? So, primary role, greatest challenges, who would like to be first? And I could do this separate if you prefer. You wanna do them separate? All right, first one. What do you see as the primary role for the Leander City Council?
Okay, I'm no first. Yeah. So, the primary role for any one of the city council, right? I see them as the face of the city. Anywhere where they sit, stand, represent, go, it's the first thing is they are the face. They are representing the residents as elected officials. Now what else? Now, any decision they are making should be thinking about Leander first. Not any interest, not any thought, but Leander first. They set the policies, they let the city head manager and the team to administer those decisions. But more importantly, when those decisions are made, it is made together while listening, understanding the merits of anything that comes before them, and making informed decisions, putting Leander residents first. So that's the primary thing that I think any council member should be doing.
Thank you.
I would say that the role of council is not only necessarily to put Leander first, but to craft and create our policies and priorities over what the citizens elected us to do, and that is to represent their priorities and policies. We have the capable power of being able to shape how the budget is utilized for the city of Leander, which is means efficiency and utilizing your taxpayer dollars. And so we are applying the utilization and the efficiency of taxpayer dollars to the priorities of the citizens of this city. So it's not just about taking nice photos and having great photo ops, it's about doing the work of the citizens and ensuring that our alignment is with the will of your taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
So, I think the main session, primary role for city council to represent our citizens and hear their voices and by the voice of the citizen to create ordinance and long-term planning for our city and make sure, like each, again, tax dollars spent there. So this is, in my mind, the main primary, like, role for each city council, to represent on the city council, our citizens.
Thank you. So the second question was, what do you think is our greatest challenge within the city of Leander for the next few years? So just pick one challenge, we know there may be quite a few. What do you think is?
So I think, I'll go ahead and get that started. So, you know, as I've been walking through the neighborhoods of the city of Leander, one of the key things that people bring up is the water issue. The fact that, you know, there is a population growth that is happening, we've all kind of avoided because this is a wonderful place to live, and everyone wants to live here, wants to build here. But there's some concern that, you know, we see the, you know, ordinances from the city that we have to worry about our utilization. And a lot of citizens will say that, you know what, the biggest thing that we're asking for from city council is that there's communication, clear and concise communication around the issue. Where are we? What do we need to do? Where does our cost collaboration as citizens? If you looked at the last report, when, as it relates to water, 79% of our water is given to our residency, and only about 7% of that is commercial population. And so there are key things that we can do in terms of strategic planning to not only map out our current population growth, this is around 87, 88,000 people, to that doubling over the next 10 years, but also talking about how can we ensure that we have a key line of sight plan from the city and how we can utilize that with our S-Purple piping or things of that nature, if that's, you know, landscape and construction, looking into that. But most importantly, communicating that to the citizens and saying, hey, this is how you can conserve, these are resources that are available to you, and this is how we are going to move Leander forward as we grow and develop.
Thank you.
So, one of my priorities is smart growth. When I say smart growth, it encapsulates or it has several things, water, infrastructure, roads, several things that come under smart growth. Also, think about something, you, we don't want people to wake up in the morning and drive somewhere else to do work. We want more and more employers. How do we position Leander in a place where we grow smartly and attract employers of all sizes, create that economic vitality, so that we also strategically address our water, infrastructure, roads, capital, anything like that we can think of that comes under for the city, everything is encapsulated in that. So that's how I would see smart growth as, as one of the power to address all the prime things for the city.
And the question is, it's the greatest challenge, do you think, Leander has?
Now, of course, Leander has the water problem issues, and also we have huge, like whole with transparency, if I correct pronunciation of this word, with the people of Leander. This is the huge problem. So we have, right now, around 90,000 people who's living in Leander there. We all have different opinions. So it's mean the city have to be more connected with people and we need our people, or the people, or again, the city councils have to present, to be representative of the, our communities, and we have to hear the needs of the people. So this is, I think, the huge problem right now, with transparency.
Does anybody wanna rebut anything? I don't, I'm not sure there's something to rebut, but you do have that as an option. Okay, go ahead.
I wouldn't say I rebut, but I would kind of clarify. In relationship to economic growth and development, smart growth, the goal is that we do have a lot of small businesses, but when I small, talk to small business owners, they say that we lose a lot of revenue and fundamental revenue, simply because we don't have a large, we don't have many large employers in the area. And so since we're not landlocked, I think that it's imperative for the city council to consider having some relationships, that where we have large employers, consider the city of Leander, that will be a stimulant economic growth as we're talking about the folks locally, and then also becoming champion of our small business owners, making things that are efficient, which is also savings on taxpayer dollars with the processes that they have to go through to start their business here. So those are two ways that I just wanna clarify, we can cultivate that transparency and see for incremental development.
Okay. So, I'll say a couple of things. On the first question, I would like to add, when the councilman and the councilwoman try to represent the city, one of the things they would like, they should do is to empower the committees and commissions that are part, like the Economic Development Council, the other commissions that are in, try to take their valuable inputs and then make those decisions. That's one key important thing. Not just listening to public, not just like what they think and make an informative decision, but also merit the inputs from the commissions and the committees. Now, the second thing, the second question, when I'm talking about small business owners, right? Small business owners are the backbone. We want to support them by innovative means, giving them channels where, hey, look at for example, do you know you can get an SBA loan like this? You have to apply like this. This is the way, like, how can we handful that? Now, we are also talking about strategically positioning Leander as a place to look for everyone to do business, to come, live, and also long-term. When I say smart growth, it's about five, 10 years, not just the one year, two years, we are looking at an overall picture, further future, roadmap type scenario. Thank you.
I'm gonna revise this question, it's terrible. Says, "How we avoid increasing taxes in the current economic environment?" I think let's make it general. Most people will tell you, gosh, these taxes are incredibly high, what are you doing with our money? But maybe just in general, do you see our growth as needing to increase? Do you see it as, just give us your reflection on the taxes. All right.
So, my answer about taxes, so current city council, actually, they did very good job, they keep our taxes on the same level. They didn't increase them. And in my mind, we have to keep going to hold in the same rates. So it's mean, we need, of course, more commercial businesses, but again, it's the how we spend this money, the budget. If you will open budget, it's every time we add on our budget, something. For example, the last budget, which will be for this planning here, so it starts in October, so they add IT. So it's mean, the money, or because the taxes in the same position, the money for this IT department new, so coming from something, yes? So, that's mean, the sum budget was added. So, and this is very important to increase our commercial and business, businesses for sales staff space, because right now it's around 3.45 percentage, and we need, of course.
Thank you.
Go next. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the quick and short answer, hitting on the nail, is increasing your tax base, broadening your tax base, not raising the taxes. That's the hitting on the nail answer. Now, if I have to expand on it, if I were a business owner, right, when I'm running a shop, running a business, I know that I do not, I can do only certain things with my expenditures and costs. I can optimize it, I can do only certain things. But the quickest way to find means of spending on things or distributing where I want is increasing revenue. That's exactly it. The city council and the city should find ways and means of expanding by attracting employers of all sizes, not passing on the burden to the residents, but increasing its tax base. Think of the regional anchors, think of employers, think of creative means where there is revenue coming to the city in 360 degrees, and then use the fiscal responsibility as well as your creative means, and then empower decisions to spend on what we want. That's exactly how I see us approaching taxes.
Thank you.
Well, I can say that, you know, no one wants their taxes increased, and I think that one of the bargaining tips of why we came to Leander is because we do have a low tax base, and that it's been fairly consistent. I think that in order to expand a tax base, you need to first need to understand how our taxes are divvied up, and I think that there needs to be a lot more communication to our tax, our tax owners or our tax providers that helps them to understand how to divvy up the city tax base, where we have, you know, a portion of our taxes going to cap metro. In terms of our continual growth, that will always be expansive, so I mean, the more people, the more revenue you have. But there needs to be ways by which we're looking at how to creatively get some gains. One of them is, you know, creating efficiencies within the processes of departments in the city. That creates, that efficiency creation saves taxpayer dollars that we can leverage and utilize, and I think that's low hanging fruit. But I think that once we communicate a little bit more about how taxes are being utilized, then I believe citizens will say, hey, we wanna necessarily be more creative and capture our tax revenue and utilize it for things that are necessary for us. We went through, over the last couple of years, two agreements with our Leander Police Department and our Leander Fire Department. We need that robust support for them, that's gonna save taxpayer dollars, so I think it's about being creative around that solution.
Along the same line, the question came up, well, if you build it, they will come. We have a lot of commercial businesses that have been built, and there's an awful lot of empty buildings. So the question is, if we need more commercial businesses to increase that tax base, what can you do to attract businesses to those empty buildings, to a new place? What are your thoughts on that?
So, as a member of Leander Union of Commerce and a person that is very affluent in how businesses run in this, in this city, I think that the first thing we need to do is build relationships. One of the key things is that we need to extend our business acumen and relationships to ensure that we're attracting those businesses. I work for a Fortune 250 company, and so I know that in working with other global companies that it's really important that we leverage our key relationship and connection, because we are looking for places to develop. We know this is considered the second Silicon Valley in the Austin region outside of other states, and so I think this is an important time for us to capitalize on it. When I pitched up these ideas and concepts to small business owners and folks that are really invested in and building the revenue, they said, yeah, absolutely. You know, I actually wanna jump on board in helping us to build those relationships so that we can ensure those large, large employers are here. Right now, we have, Leander Independent School District is one of our large employers, and we're doing things from a home, a home building perspective to ensure that those folks not only get here with their talents, but they live here as well, and so I think that expanding that more from a business perspective from home. Thank you.
So, referring back to one of my priorities, you would see economic growth, this one thing, smart growth and economic vitality. That's where I would map this answer to. So think of means of attracting regional anchors, something really happening that attracts indirectly everyone. Example, Cedar Park has got Nebraska Furniture Mart, it's going to drive a lot of traffic, a lot of things around it. Now, think of something, let's, as a city, as residents, think about something that is, we call it to be an anchor to Leander, feel proud that indirectly drives that economic vitality and traffic, that also supports our small businesses, which are our backbone for the economy. That's one thing. Now, the second thing is, there is also a regional coordination. Have you ever thought about one thing? Cedar Park, when they have planned some growth here, 183A, which is near the Costco, that was intentionally done and that attracts a lot of Leander traffic towards it, because it's very convenient, a lot of people, right? So those are some things where, when you think about smart growth, we want intentional growth so that we complement for future on our roadmap, how we want Leander to be developed, so that we have everything we need in Leander, not only for ourselves, but attract everyone else to come in. Economic Development Council, that's one other thing, by playing those discussions with the broader things like Disney or anyone, like for those examples, attracting them creates those opportunities for our small businesses.
So, can you repeat my goal?
Yeah, it's, how are we going to attract commercial businesses? We all heard you say that's a great idea, just wanna know how you're gonna do it.
And the question was about empty buildings?
Well, the question here said, there's a lot of empty buildings. So...
So, the challenge for all business owners, it doesn't matter for big or for small, so everyone come clean for long process to get permission for any type of businesses, sorry?
There are a link, like, that is a candidate's your time.
Yeah. So, other permit process, too long. So, other permit process too long. And this is huge problem. And also, the work, how is our engineering department and, uh, planning zoning department working? It's also take a lot of time. And I spoke with a lot of different businesses, and they have the totally same problem. So, it's mean, we have to make the process for permits easier, like, as much as possible. Of course, we just can't out there. And also, we, we have been in the Chamber of Commerce, the tour. So, what I can see right now is, again, it's kind of huge, huge disbalance, because it will open a lot of small, uh, coffee shops and small, uh, fast food restaurants, but what about other businesses, the other businesses too? So, the problem with permits and with balance, this is like, we, we should work on.
Yes, she can. Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify one thing, you know, I, uh, I received the endorsement from, um, Mayor, um, Jen Merman, um, sorry, uh, Karen Merman, and essentially, we were walking to Lake Wood, uh, Park, we were talking about, you know, what are the differentials that we see in Cedar Park? And how can we do this in the city of Leander? And one of those things is about shaping, uh, businesses, and he said, this is a pivotal point. Uh, you know, Cedar Park was at that point, and I think, uh, one of the folks kind of brought up how there is intentionality behind it. Well, that's just about shaping what businesses can and can't do. One of the biggest things that Cedar Park has, um, that is leveraged, is that they have incentivizing dollars. And they also build a network and a communication with these business owners to say that, when you come to Cedar Park, you're investing in this first, because this is a part of our brand agency. This is a part of who we are, this is the heart of who we are in City of Leander. And so, we wanna do the same thing here, sorry, City of Cedar Park. We wanna do the same thing here in Leander. We want to talk to business owners, and we want to build from a, a, a revenue standpoint, incentivizing them to say, hey, you know, if you're gonna do a negotiation with us, you're also gonna invest in the heart of who Leander is. And that will help shape kind of the intentionality of what we're trying to do in this city as it relates to our economic growth and development.
Okay, again, hitting on the nail answer, that lot of small mom and pop shops or the small businesses are empty. Think about bringing an employer, what do they do? Like, the employees during the lunchtime, they drive out, go to the small businesses that are close by, and they have the lunch, they pick up, they have office events with the close by businesses. That's a short answer, that's one way of thinking to solve that problem. The other piece of it is, as I was explaining, with the corporate experience that I'm in, I often have negotiations with several companies. When I talk about several companies, these are incubators, these are seed ideas that people come up with, those are business ideas. But, thinking about in the company lens, how does that benefit them, the company, and the residents of the city, is how I would approach it in the future. Like, if there is anyone coming to the table, hey, how does this help the residents of Leander long term? So those are two things that I would ask.
Yeah, thank you.
I want just, one small piece about our science ordinance in the city. I've heard a lot of complaints from business owners about science ordinance. So, it's mean, again, this is direct responsibility for city council to board on this science ordinance. So, city did best job, but we have to perfect this.
But what's the sign ordinance?
So, for example, uh, Chuck Booker, couple meetings ago, with his friend, also small business owner, he came and request about how to promote his business, because his cafe, like, the Booker place, right now, it's like, the D and people who run, run Ronald Reagan, they can see he is there. And this is part of the business, uh, like, solution and budget. People have to see your business, you have...
So, are you suggesting block the science ordinance, like?
No, we have to work on science ordinance, how we can create, like, maybe the, you know, a tower with the science, little bit bigger, or maybe something else we have to study, like, this process.
If I can just tap on, kind of to what Anna was saying, um, yeah, there has been a big concern about, um, the sign ordinance not necessarily being conducive and supporting what small businesses need. So, the, um, business might be backed away from the main street, so people don't know, may, going through Main Thoroughfare, that they're even there. And so, they lose capital gains business, uh, business support simply because of that. And so, what ends up happening is a lot of people start to submit waivers. So then, now there is the city churn through the departments to get the waivers approved. Most of the time, we kind of follow along and go through with it, and it happens anyways. So, that's where we need to create some efficiency in the process. In my, my mind, if we are having, you know, a high propensity of people that are always proposing certain signed waivers, then we really need to look at the ordinance and say, hey, is this conducive to supporting what our businesses need? Is there any way that we can support, um, our, our businesses, um, from a sign perspective? Because it shouldn't be difficult to do business in Leander. People wanna come here, it would help grow and thrive and build our economy. So, we need to find ways by which we can partner with them to make sure that it's efficient. And in my mind, if we're, like I said, if we're having a high propensity of waivers going through for the same sign ordinance, then the problem is not the people applying for the waivers, it's the actual ordinance itself.
This next question, totally different, and some people may not be aware of it, I wasn't until I got this question. This year, the city of Leander allowed block safety to start installing cameras along public roadways. One is in Crystal Falls, in the median, on Crystal Falls Parkway, coming north from Cedar Park. How will you ensure a public oversight and accountability regarding the use of block cameras? What specific protections will be put in place to prevent this use of data? What recourse would citizens have? So, block safety is where they take a picture of the license plate, and if there's an outstanding...
Warrant.
Warrant, if there's something about this that flags them, I guess, there could be a follow-up based on that license plate. Is, does anybody wanna respond to block safety? The question is, how will you ensure public oversight and accountability regarding, what are you gonna do with this information, I guess? What, what protections will be put in place to prevent this use of data?
So, if this is put in place by the city, right, so if this is put in place by the city, obviously, the city has thought about it. So, the first hand that should touch that data is our law enforcement. So, they should have the visibility into it, obviously, there might be some reporting extracts that might go to some of the city officials, city department members. So, nothing wrong, as long as the data privacy is maintained. So, privacy is a big thing, right? Data security, data privacy is a big thing. Then obviously, city, when it is doing it, the city attorney, everyone would have given a thought about it. Now, think about the other side of the, the situation. Now, we are talking about one side of it. The importance of having it is for the neighborhood. It, it further secures the neighborhood, improves the property values, improves the security of every resident, helps us peacefully sleep. How is it different from what a public, um, signal camera is captured? Obviously, it's capturing more data, but it is little more than a water signal camera is captured. So, as long as we are good stewards, good citizens, I don't think there should be a problem, because the data privacy and, uh, the data security is handled by the city teams closer to it.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna respond?
Sure, I can take that.
Yeah, well...
So, you know, I've had some conversations with Chief Linton and Assistant Chief Watcher, uh, regarding, you know, our safety and security, and I can rest assured that we're one of the safest cities out here. And our ISO rating is at a rate two, uh, which is actually taking, uh, giving us savings on insurance. So, just FYI, uh, we're, we're a very safe city. So, I, I would also say that, you know, two parts. One, you know, since it's already been installed, I, I'm pretty sure that there has been some efficiency looking at the safety data protection, um, of the data that is coming through. Um, but, and there's a good opportunity for us to continue that safety and, safety and security. Like I said, this is, this is why we moved down here, this is why we wanna live here, um, and continue to grow our values here. Um, I think the other part is that this is a good opportunity for, um, the, the citizens to get some communication around it, you know, since that question was posed, you know? You know, I would pose it back to the audience, is there a severe concern on having those cameras in the neighborhood? And if so, then that's something that we need to address, but I think that is all in the eyes of safety and security, and that's important for...
I didn't even know we can't go on that.
Right, what, which, which goes back to communication. I think that, you know, a lot of, a little bit more transparency around it, which helps citizens out, I've kind of heard some people saying, what is that in the audience? You know, so I think it's really important for us to just be transparent around some of those sensitive topics, particularly as it relates to data and security.
Thank you.
So, yes, I agree with, uh, Natomi, and you know, uh, this is for our security. But again, so for me, it's very interesting what part of budget was used for those cameras, and, uh, what is the reason? So, I'm still not city council, and I have to learn about this, and I...
Like, why, why, really?
Yes, yes, why? And, uh, but I think it's, it's good, until it's, like, safety. And, uh, we have, like, security for our IT data centers and database.
Okay, can I add something?
Sure.
So, it reminds me of a couple of things, uh, for me. There were a few communities who were asking for it, if Crystal Falls has it, it's, it's, they are lucky.
It's because of AI.
Yeah, so it is, I mean, Crystal Falls is lucky to have it, because I have heard two communities ask for it. Now, the point that I wanted to add is, in my conversation with Chief Minton, and the other mention we were having is, we were discussing AIs everywhere, we are talking AI, we are living in the AI generation, right? So, we were talking about how can we use some of the drones and everything AI capabilities so that we also care about the human lives that are in the forefront? The second piece of it is, how do we regionally collaborate with cities like Round Rock, cities like Georgetown, where the time might be committed here, but like, you find somewhere, or they commit there and then come to Leander? So, it gives a cross collaboration opportunity as well, having these technologies, while maintaining data privacy, data security, and having it in good hands, which our law enforcement is.
Thank you. Um, we've been hearing a lot of motorcycles behind us, and the question, next question has to do with e-bikes. Any of us that have been around, we've already had a few accidents with e-bikes. They are not well regulated. What are your thoughts about creating rules regarding e-bikes, e-scooters within the Leander city limits? Leander Police Department has stated to our HOA that they have issues controlling the e-bikes due to a lack of city ordinances and governing their use. Probably, there isn't anybody here that hasn't noticed, there's a lot more of them out there, and they can go quite fast. Thoughts about what the city should be doing?
So, um, I can just briefly state that, you know, that this is not the only community that's had to deal with e-bikes. Um, there have also been issues in other neighborhoods where people have been injured, um, because of there not being allocated lanes for e-bikes. And as our city grows and develops, there is just gonna be utilization of different forms of, of transport. What I think was key about that, um, that question, is that there are policies and ordinances that can be looked into. And I think this is, once again, goes into creating city efficiency. If we see something that is not working and is not conducive to the transitions that we're making as a community, then we need to really look at what ordinances are we gonna need to put in place to ensure the safety of our citizens. So I think that's really key in parallel, and would help you kind of migrate this, um, particular subject in the right direction.
So, I would start with this, technology is very evolving, right? So, always, like, today, there is something, but tomorrow, we might see something new, which is the case here, e-bikes and everything never existed when most of us were kids. So, the first thing that I would say is, like, as those things mature, like, obviously, the law enforcement, the ordinances, everything will also mature, understanding, like, what should be done and how it should be regulated. But prior to that, there is something in our hands. We, as parents, can have a discussion with the kids as to what is safe for them, what is safe for others who are doing. Let's start there. The second is, let's start with the HOA, let's start with as a community where there is no HOA in the groups and everything, let's have that particular discussion to keep ourselves safe. By the time, next, the city ordinances, as well as everything will evolve. So, it is a collective effort, but I think we'll get there, as with any technology that matures. And then, obviously, like AI, we have seen AI being used for everything, and now there are, like, strict things about how AI is being used in the country and how it is allowed, and how foreign countries are being allowed to do business with it. So, same there. Thank you.
So, um, in my mind about this question, it's too early for our city to have divided lanes. We have a lot of different, like, very important issues and problems, what we have to solve. And, uh, this is again, from police department and from fire, for, like, law enforcement. So, it's, we have to study first, how it's working in different cities, who is, use this. So, it will take a long time to create correct ordinance for using, like, e-bikes or e-scooters, whatever. Maybe flying something in couple years. So, this, this is my question. Do we need it right now here to give, like, or we should to stop use e-bike and, uh, like, use some transport in our city for better times?
There are other questions, I'm gonna go to one last one, and then go to the group to see if they have questions, and then allow people to be, encourage you individually. Last question says, what are your general thoughts regarding the use of public improvement district, planned unit development, municipal utility district in Leander developments? So, PID, PVs, and MEVs. And that should make sense to you.
Okay, anyone wants to go first, or I think... Okay, so, um, there are three things, if anyone is not aware, like, we are talking about three things. Mud, HUD, and PIT. Okay, so those are, those are the terms that often that developers use, the city council uses, as well as, like, someone in the government uses. Now, think about, Leander has got, like, some land, and that land needs to be developed as a master community, something like Crystal Falls. When Crystal Falls was planned, it was planned as a master development, and the city didn't have the infrastructure, like, the water and the wastewater to Crystal Falls. So, the way it was done is through mud, municipal utility district. So, what it does is, it's, it's a bold, it's a new...
Okay, Crystal Falls is...
It was not developed as a mud? Okay, then I'll take Ravieso as an example, because Ravieso was done as a mud, okay? So, the utilities didn't exist, so the way utilities were brought in is based on the dollar amount that is set aside as a bond, which is paid over twenty-five, thirty years long term, along with the property taxes, that allows to begin the water infrastructure management. That's about the mud aspect of it. Next, you, you would have heard about PIT. PIT comes in, when thinking about, like, I enter, I want, like, some fancy thing which the city doesn't need, but I need a monument, I need a landscaping element which beautifies the community, that's where PIT comes in, where city council has gotta say, where they evaluate what funds are needed, and then there is a payback amount each time the property taxes are being paid. So, it's solely, the first one is an independent board, TCEQ, that is paid with it, that makes addition, that's as, as per the Texas law. The second one, PIT, that I'm talking about, is a city council taking addition about it when there is an interest from a community to enhance, beautify, add special things that the city doesn't need, but the people need. The PUD, the other side of, uh, is, is more about, think of it as, uh, I'm thinking about, uh, an example that I can, uh, give it to you. Okay, so, um, we talked about the mud, PIT, and the PUD, um, perspective, is, is more about, uh... Okay, so, um, we talked about the mud, pit and the PUD perspective is, is more about, uh, okay, now I'm blanking out on it, I'll take a review though.
I mean, that was quite a bit of education for me too.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to add?
So pit, hood and mud, um, we got an education a little bit about what those are. I think as it relates to the city, um, in the city council meetings that I sat in, it's really about are we able to efficiently, effectively include those in our city based on the resources that we have? So I think, you know, we've talked about a little bit about water and some of the concerns there. I think that it always comes down to, um, do we have the utility resources to support on this community being integrated into the city of Leander? And then also from a security, a support, um, safety and security perspective. Um, do we have enough firefighters and fire departments built in that area to be able to support that area? Do we have enough police to, to have the correct, um, citizen to police ratio, um, within our city? So I think that holistically, those decisions will be on a case by case basis, based on where we are as a city and what we can absorb. And in some instances, you know, it might not be to our best interest, but hopefully if we may create some efficiencies, um, there will be some opportunities to, to, since we want to be a part of the city of Leander.
Okay, I will recollect. So, and I will tie back to the question. So PUD is more around the zoning aspect of it. So it's a special zoning aspect of it where certain master developers like ask for a specific type of zoning, where they can decide where, how the neighborhood can be developed, like certain sectors of housing, certain commercial growth, certain neighborhood parks, open spaces. That's about it. So it's about the support structure of zoning where it allows the developer to do all that. But most important thing is the city can hold the developer accountable for what they have promised about doing it. If they have promised a golf course, they can hold them accountable until and unless it is changed on paper. So tying back to all these three things, right? It is very important for Leander because the city may not have the financial resources every time a project is brought about. So these are the ways that the Texas state government as well as, there are other means in a way to meet where the dollars can be found, where it is not afforded, but the residents paid over the time. So that is the beauty of these three things, the mud, pit and the PUD. So that's exactly how it likes tracking a question.
Okay, thank you.
I, so I sort of feel obligated to get this question in.
I was gonna skip it.
It was the only question that was submitted, uh, that addressed to one particular candidate and that's Mr. Marchetti. City often plans its building projects and development proposals decades in advance. As a major development with property interests in Leander, you would have any insight into these plans? How will you address and avoid the appearance of impropriety if elected to the council?
Two, two parts to this question. So the first thing is when I decided to run for office, the first and foremost thing that I've done is going back to my employer and saying conflict of interest. Policy call is conflict of interest. And then, uh, that is the first thing that I did. Expressly telling that I'm doing this, is there any conflict of interest that I'm running into? Why violating any policy? That's the first part, okay? That talks about my integrity. Now coming to the second part of the question, how would I do? Because by profession, uh, as well as like mode of interest, I'm also into real estate developments. And I don't do just the brick and mortar, but I bring in the community aspect of it. I do not have any projects in Leander and I've declared, when I ran for office, the only property that I own in Leander is my primary residence with a model. Now, coming to your question, every time that I foresee a conflict of interest, I often declare and excuse myself. That's the first thing that I do. The second thing is if there is something how this non-disclosure, we all have to agree with it. There is also a legal term called non-disclosure. So if my first and foremost duty, I would say a judiciary duty when I'm elected is non-disclosure. There are often confidential topics that are discussed at the council when there are internal meetings. There are often certain things which could be of advantage to certain people if openly shared. So coming from a Fortune three company, I've lived my twenty-plus years of life, corporate life, where I've seen several large scale initiatives. Think about like we are acquiring a company. I know, don't go and buy this stock. I know that, that there is a confidentiality aspect of it, there is a non-disclosure aspect of it. Same thing applies here. Man of integrity, responsibility, and I made sure that I'm excusing myself if there's a relation where there's a non-confluent, uh, where there's a conflict, excuse me. And then the second thing is non-disclosure, unfigured, if it is required and by principle. And I believe character is higher than intellect. Character, once it is assassinated in one way or the other, I'm using a strong word, there is no way you can build it back. That's how I would answer that question.
It's all my question.
Yeah.
Um, I simply would go to the group, who has a question?
Oh.
We've got lots of questions. Um, yes.
Um, so my question is very specific to Crystal Falls. We have this beautiful golf course here. That used to not make the city very much money, but I know that it's actually doing very well now and is producing a large amount of funds to the city. One of the things that I see lacking right now is that we have this opportunity to, with a restaurant attached to the golf course, that has continued to fail. And part of that is because I did tour it prior to, um, the new, uh, people running it, um, to see if it was an opportunity for some people I know that own a restaurant. And looking at it, it's set up for failure. It, it does not have a kitchen that's very good, well to use, like it's very tiny, that there's not refrigeration, it's very small. Um, this, like, there's just, um, it's, it's disappointing because I see so much opportunity there. But I also believe that the city doesn't want to spend the money on that, would rather spend the money, take the money that the, the golf course is making, earning, and use it for other things in the city where I think there's this great opportunity to have, like the Good Lot that is in Cedar Park is booming. And all they serve really is a few food trucks and beer. But they've created an environment that people want to be in. If we had good food and we created spots for people to sit, it doesn't have to be limited to the time that is only for golfing too. It would be a place that people in the community would love to go to, I, I imagine. And so I'm just curious what you guys.
Yeah, the restaurant is a city and commercial partnership.
I would like to answer this. So, um, please do not have a time limit because I'm speaking my mind and heart on this, okay? So here is the first thing that I would say. Crystal Falls is one of the crown jewels of Leander to me. The golf course that you have in Crystal Falls is a very rare thing and it's, it's, it speaks about the character of the community. I live in Raviso, I do not have something like that. I cannot put a golf course on Baghdad, I cannot put it on Eroby. So it becomes our collective responsibility as residents of Leander to treat places like these as how can we continue and take it to the next generation next time? And also enhance it. That's the first thing that comes to my mind. Now coming to the point of about restaurant, right? One of the parallel that I would like to draw and I'll, I'll come to your question is, in Cedar Park, I'm, I'm, uh, doing a project. And again, I told you that I don't do brick and mortar. So I'm doing a rooftop restaurant thing. We know Leanders Cedar Park does not have a rooftop restaurant today. It is coming and that's one part. Now coming to your question, right? Those innovative things of doing the restaurants, something which allows the families of Crystal Falls, people who are in the sun doing the, the, playing golf or having an evening where they want to relax with their friends because golf is one of the elite, elite sport. And with that, there is a specific mindset where like everyone wants to come together, talk. It's not about rich, it's not about poor or anything else. It's about a space for the community to unwind the day after this sport, relax with the family, also meet friends. So the way I would treat that particular problem is if city doesn't have money, how can we come to the table to do a city private thing? Is that a possible thing? It may not be possible, but what discussions need to happen to make it possible is how I would creatively talk about it. Maybe we do a revenue share to the city and increase its revenue while we still enjoy what we want as a restaurant in Crystal Falls. So I don't want to spend city money, we all don't want to. But come about, come with innovative ways or the smart ways of thinking to solve that, which in this case is a private-public partnership? Or do a private person do it, but pay to the HOA, pay to the city type thing. Several ways, they have to creatively, hasn't, doesn't have any end, doesn't have a pull start, it has a come on, right? We all know that. And that's how I would answer your question. Yes, please.
Can I have a response? Can I actually talk on to the way you answered that a little bit? So I, I think it's cool, a great idea to have the public and private kind of, you know, cooperation in a project like that. Is, would you as a city councilman or any of you seek out those partnerships with the private industry in order to actually build those bridges and make those things happen? Rather than waiting for a private sector to come to you and ask for a partnership?
Yes, that is exactly where we want to do. So it is, it is a meritorious vision, right? So like here is what I would say. So we do have an economic ADC, this one, right? Like which interacts things about how we boost our economy. I as a councilman may not go directly, but there could be an economic development committee that could wear the hat to kind of go and have those conversations to see is that possible? Obviously, everything should be like black and white. Everything should be an open public forum discussion and everything. But that initiative should be there to do, right face, right means.
Let me make one clarification here. The city owns this course.
Yes, it's a public.
It's a city-public course.
Yes.
The city has a, a public-private arrangement with the restaurant already.
Okay.
With a prior tenant, prior tenant had the right to pull all of their kitchen equipment and take it with them when they left. And they did.
Okay.
So the new tenant has to put in their kitchen, give them the space a lot.
Okay, so it is.
If I could very, 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 if I could speak to this matter, I think, if I can respectfully speak to this. I think this is a little bit about where the city can lie in. Because as the scripture says, where your treasure is, that's where your heart is also. And so it's about investing as the city of Leander, as council members, in what we have here. This is a public course, this is a public space. And so where are we seeing a cross collaboration where the city is marketing this new space and this, this restaurant? As a member of the Leander Chamber of Commerce, I have access to a lot of that information, so I know the restaurant is here. But a lot of our citizens don't and they weren't aware of it and they would have loved to have used the facility for some type of event space collectively. And so I think that it's about, one, communicating, but secondly, marketing to our citizens to leverage and utilize this. Tons of businesses would have come and said, hey, let's kind of invest in setting up events here. We don't, we don't actually.
So I'm gonna back that because it's not, I don't believe it's just about marketing, otherwise you can see our Crystal Falls residents there on a nightly basis. It's, it's that, it's not, it wasn't the facility is, is. It's, it's not because the, the people who have that, the, are running the current restaurant, they're doing what they can with this tiny little space that is, they're, they're set up for failure. So the city has to invest or create a collaboration, like he's saying that, you know, we, we will invest with you guys or something, but it has.
Well, do you think the space is efficient enough?
No.
Yes.
So I think that is problem number one.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Because he visits especially a restaurant.
I don't think we're gonna be able to make headway on this.
I also, I put my, my, I have to say.
Okay, let, let me speak to my last.
All right, I had a question.
About golf carts. So there, like years before, I, I did my research, we spent golf cart money for other issues in the city. Now, the city councils, actually they do not their job, like not perfect, good job. They started investing, like, again, money for golf carts. So, and I think it will coming, just, this is the first step to try how it will be. And after, of course, again, they will keep all your, like, feedbacks about what is going on or we will do like this. And we will perfect this restaurant. And I know, like, city council right now are working hard to, like, do new glasses and, uh, maintain the, one of the best golf course around the city. So this is like.
Albert, do you have a follow-up follow-up question?
Well, I have, I have two questions.
All right.
One of them was related to that, but I don't want to tell it too much.
Well, I'm just concerned about timing and being able to social, and I, I know your hand's been up too, but Albert's hand was up at the same time. Albert?
Well, I, I have, I'm sorry, I read a lot of your habits, maybe it's a fault. But the budget was approved, you passed it with post. You heard transparency, it don't sound like it's a mess. Second, as part of that budget, I, I learned there's a hundred thirty-three million dollar bond that's trying to go out. What is it for? It's not a pit or a putt or a mud or a stud or whatever that's called. It's a general, it's a general bomb, right? That means we have paid for that. What is that bomb? And why hasn't this budget done?
Okay, I cannot speak to what that bomb is, but here is what I would say. Like if elected, if elected, one of the fiscal responsibility aspect and being an executive leader of the company that I work for is periodical dashboards, periodical reporting that comes out and says, today, if you look up in your phone, there is no city app. I didn't find a Leander city app. I could find it for Cedar Park. Think about.
LeanderDX dot com.
Okay, so.
They figure all policies and, they have to post it. The problem is, it isn't posted. The problem is, I as a resident know about this, this budget. I'm hearing it secondhand and notice a hundred thirty-three million dollar bond out there because I buy bonds and make money in living. So how do I find this out? Yet the community itself is dark.
So one of the things.
I found it out, you've got your, you live here, you should have found it out too. I'm expecting after this.
Yeah, so thank you for sharing that perspective. The way I would say it is I would help advocate for transparency and periodical information about what every resident should be informed about. On your tax book, it's not the property taxes, whatever you see, additional line items, plus how the water is being used. How many of us know here that last month, the golf course hit like point zero two seven percentage of the water? It's very many, right? So that information we want, information of that sort, we want every resident to have, whether or not they decide to read, whether or not they decide to do something with it is a different thing. But I want, I would advocate for that information to be transparent periodically. That's how I would say it.
I didn't forget you. Please forget. Did you want, do you want one to answer?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I will get to you next, I swear.
So, um, so I, I did kind of, um, look at the information. I think that the bond is related to Leander Independent School District. Um, and if the bond is on the budget, then it means it must have been voted on and agreed upon, uh, previously. So I think that's where the association is. But going back to your point of transparency, I think that that's the, the underlying issue here is that citizens do want a level of transparency and the lens taken off of the people that are directly associated with budget or policymaking to say this, hey, this is how it's going to impact you so that you are just vitally aware of it all. Because I agree with you, like in terms of city budget, I mean.
I'm expecting to have more information to share with you.
Yeah, well, I said, I think that it's related to Leander Independent School District performing.
But I'm a resident, I'm just.
Now, does that mean that the city has a role in funding LISD? My understanding was LISD.
No, no, any bond, any bonds associated.
So why is it in the city?
Because it's on city land. And so anything that's associated with, built out with the, that's within the city limits, uh, will have to have an allocation or a line item that's associated with it. And, you know, to that point, you know, I do have a relationship with Leander Independent School District and endorsements for quite a few folks because I think it is key to have connection to that leadership and bring that lens of transparency to the dials. But, uh, I did look it up and so I think that's, I believe that's what it is.
And who do you want to ask?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of words about.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of words about, again, transparency and about more information. We are just run for the office, we're not supposed to know everything, and it's a lot of close information. Of course, we know budget, and we run, and especially I run, to work with all those bonds and budgets in the future and make sure it's going in the right way and get each resident's feedback real.
Okay. I think it is your turn next.
Okay.
Okay.
I hope I can remember. Um, I just wanna say thank you for being here today and answering and telling us all these things that y'all are about. But also, uh, glad to hear that you are working with our biggest employer, I think y'all said, is Leander Independent School District. And back on the EVI issue and the scooter and all those things, um, I think it's really important since the school started and you start seeing these kids riding on the sidewalk, going to the elementary school, going to high school. And there was an accident that I saw what happened afterwards, I think I was got there a few minutes later, and the little kid was standing there and the car was over here, and, and it kinda, you're right, things are moving so fast in that industry that, yes, if y'all could, definitely seek that out and make some kind of organs. We're working with the LISD together, because it's, I think, gonna be more the school, with, with the kids. And then, yes, it goes to the family, and then it goes to the, the, the school council and all that, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely needs to be some consideration, policy-related around EVI. I was talking to a parent, um, that has children in high school, something, I have three boys, but they're middle school members, so I wasn't aware of this. But they were talking about how, like, sometimes they have classes that they don't have to, uh, they have like free, um, hour classes that they don't attend. And so, they're having to commute, because they can't be on campus, they're having to commute at later times or leave early. And so, I mean, this is another form of transport for someone who doesn't have a vehicle, doesn't have a license, parents are working, you know, can't have them commuting, and so, I mean, it's something that we, as we're shaping the city, we need to look at ways by which we need to shape and consider policies to help support the safety and security of our, of our children.
And also, we have, we should understand what is criteria for this policy, for safety policy, or especially for bikes, like you said. This is, this is criteria, and the first responders and police and fire department or other, Leander ISD, they are supposed to be responsible for some, like, for some part, but the other part have to be on the parent's shoulders. So, this is huge question. What is the criteria about safety policy and how it will work? That's why, are we ready for this, or we need to put something more strict in our safety policy in general and keep going to study and make it's more like perfect?
Give two more questions and then we're gonna, if you wanna answer.
So, I think, bikes, aren't, aren't they just bikes first?
No, man.
No.
Three, three different kinds. One has pedals and the bike can be propelled by the pedals. It also has a motor, the bike can be propelled by the motor as well. That's one type. That can be younger kids, that does not require license to drive, uh, they don't have to have anything other than good sense. So, remember, the parents are the one that bought this thing.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. It starts with the parents.
And some of the, the people I've seen riding are, have not been listening to the parents, or the parents didn't give them a talk about that. Second thing, if they don't have pedals, if they just have a footrest and they have a motor, but there's no way to propel the bike without using the motor, that is a motorcycle equivalent, requires a license plate, requires you to have a driver's license to drive it. I personally observe kids under the age of drivers, age, driving those bikes that don't have pedals. Then there are the scooters. The scooters can be foot-propelled and propelled by a motor. Uh, we've restricted the use, if they can go more than twenty-five miles per hour, they're not legal on our roads and on our trails. So, three different kinds right now. What's not covered in there is assistive, uh, devices like the carts in Randalls that, you know, people are sitting there. That's grandfathered, that, that isn't.
Yeah. So, adding to this thing and your question, right, it starts with the family, the parents, right? Life is something we know, if something happens, no one can do anything about it. As parents, it's the first responsibility. Forget about school delays, forget about class means and everything. Life, if something happens, it's not just that individual, but also the other person driving. I go up the hill and every day I see, it's just not the motor thing, but it's also the, for lack of better words, like all sorts of feeds with those bikes in the middle of the road. And it puts not only them in danger, but also the person driving the car, because the visibility also comes into place. So, what is the value if there is no life or if there is an impact to life, I love it, it starts with the parents. Starts with the HOA Association to control something within the, uh, thing, until the policies and as well as the ordinances come. And the schools, because just how they banned the cellphone devices during the class are exactly the same thing. Schools also.
Remember, the HOAs do not have a police force, the city does.
Yes. Yeah, until the ordinances come.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, also, it's, uh, connected with driver license. Like, when we are doing and passing test for driving, it has to be on those, like, like rules and regulations. So, it's mean, again, it's huge work. We have to study how to do this. Because if we will not allow by the HOA, it, like, it will not work.
Our good forces.
Yes. If it's just parents' responsibility, again, a lot of parents who work during the day, and they have no idea how the kids, like, acting during those times, especially with friends. So, it has to be complex altogether, working and like creating new rules and ordinance and safety protocols.
I have two more questions. I'm gonna go, I know that you've, you've had your hand up for a while, so please begin. Um, so, you all talked about the importance of bringing in business to Leander for saving our tax base and, you know, just all the benefits of course of that. When I'm working, so, I'm a realtor, I'm working with people who are looking to move in and around Leander. And one of the reasons that people have historically kind of chosen Leander State over Cedar Park, especially like north Cedar, or sorry, south Cedar Park, is south Cedar Park's starting to feel more and more like North Austin. And if you wanna live in the city, you wanna live in the city, and if you wanna live in the suburbs, you wanna live in the suburbs. And usually, you have a preference of one or the other. People who are choosing Leander typically want that suburb lifestyle and that feeling. I'm also seeing people who are wanting to move out of Leander because it's getting really busy and it's getting really crowded, and we have been one of the fastest-growing cities for a few years now in the country. So, we're growing really fast, which is awesome. But how can y'all, um, address sort of, how will Leander be bringing in business without killing kind of the vibe of Leander, without making it feel like North Austin?
My first point, if you see my, um, little piece of literature, balance growth. When I say balance growth, whatever infrastructure is being planned intentionally at certain strategic places. You want that so that you are hearing the mind and heart of the people, the residents, you are hearing the mind and heart of the people staying next door, and then make those educated choices. I'm also endorsed by HPA, Austin Home Builders Association. Now, one of the questions that I answered was, like, we need everyone to be able to live, not just the rich, not just the poor, not just like anyone. We want housing for everyone, but while still maintaining the vibe we want. Yes, it's a choice of a resident to stay wherever they want within the Leander, but planning the growth intentionally at certain places where it doesn't disturb, but also elevates the economic vitality piece of it for Leander is the way to go. That is the balance growth.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sure. Uh, I think that what speaks to your question is about the vibe, is how do we continue to instill and continue the culture of the city of Leander? And to your point, this is a high, um, per capita unit income, I think it's around one-twenty-three, um, in this, in the city. And, you know, to the point of, of Mohan, there are ways by which I think that developers are looking to help support, um, um, affordable housing. But the point is, is that we really need to seek, you know, some information from the citizens. So, I know the city of Leander did push out a survey and was asking for that information that will be released fairly soon, um, on kind of the things that you like and you don't like about it. Because I feel like when, you know, um, when Anna and I were, were at the Leander City Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Summit, um, a lot of the developers were like, you kind of, you need to know where you want us to invest in the brand agency of Leander. Like, what is Leander? I mean, if people travel over to Cedar Park, they kind of know. We're in Cedar Park area because it's, it's visible by the way that it's shaped. And so, it's about how do we bring that here? And I think first priority is getting that collective data and communication and saying, this is our brand agency. And then when we're shaping smart growth and development, we're looking at how can you invest in that? This is a portion, this is a portion of the deal that you're gonna make with the city, is that you're gonna invest in us. This is who we are, and, you know, I love, you know, the fact that we have farms such as Seventy-Five Oaks Farm, you know, here in the city of Leander, and you can go learn about, I can at least go learn about how I need shades for my garden because I've got too many hot areas. Um, but just having that connection and community where everybody knows your name, that's a part of who we are. We go, we go to the, this particular shop to, to eat, this, we go to this particular shop, um, to get beauty accessories. I mean, these are the things that we do, it's a part of who we are, even though we have a culture of the suburb, um, we still wanna make sure that we're invested in the brand agency and who we are is the heart of Leander.
So, I'm Commissioner in Public Art and Culture. And we are working right now for the master plan for public art and culture. And also, cities just have the printing printer, which will, like, create rent for our city. And it's kind of will support the Leander vibe, like specific for all of us. So, and it will be a part of intensive plan, and we will all be, so. And we will kind of follow this direction, because just imagine, so we have senior center right now, yes. And for El Parque, as a quest, we have to create the sculpture for the senior center. So, how we will create the sculpture and choose the sculpture for senior center, we have to ask who? Who will use this senior center? Seniors. And after, we will figure out, it's much with interior or exterior, and do we have budget for this? So, it's the same situation with whole city. We have to have our rent and follow this direction. But the most important, like, in my mind, what I want to see here, I want to keep Leander, Leander and Texas, Texas, because I'm moving out and I can go here to Texas, to United States and to Leander, to live, like, in the Texas. With Texas vibe. Last question.
Uh, wonderful. Thank you. You guys have all done a great job, so thank you very much for that. Um, I know it's difficult getting up here and being heard by questions, particularly for me, but that's okay. So, I'll apologize a little bit, we spent time on that. One of the things that I noticed that is a frustration for me, right? I chose Leander to follow up on, uh, I think Michelle's question here, as a place I wanted to move to. It was promised, uh, controlled growth, right? And there was this thing that I, 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 I found pretty emblematic of what I was working for. And that was rural life with access to some of the modern convenience. And so, what I mean by that is, I signed up to move to Leander and invest in this community because I wanted to see this control grow, and I wanted to see what we were doing with the domain. Okay, north domain, right? And it is dead as far as I can tell, and it's zoning issues, city issues. Um, you know, our politicians are slowing down their potential to build out that area. And we talked about collectively here, let's bring jobs here. How those things are diametrically opposed. You guys are trying to shut them down, putting new rules in place and let, um, and yet you still wanna bring new jobs to the area. Can somebody explain to me how to justify that kind of position? And what, what voice you would take to the community to try and revitalize that and bring those jobs to Leander?
That's a tough one, but it's an important one.
It is a tough one, but it's, it's about not putting the cart before the horse. And so, I think that, so I think, one, I'm not a sitting council, so I can speak freely. That, you know, I really see, I've seen a lot of low-hanging fruit where we need to create efficiencies in the way our process is working and running, um, and those are the things that can help us right-size what we're doing in terms of working with the city. That, I mean, it's, it's low-hanging fruit. I mean, if you ask any business owner, if you ask any citizen, I mean, they'll give you like top two things off the bat. I mean, we've heard of some of those things here in terms of transparency, um, lack signage issues and ordinances. I mean, there are some things that people have been reverberating over the years that I think it's key time, you know, as, you know, an elected leader, that I would bring to the table. Let's take care of creating efficiencies first and, and build our foundation before we go ahead and try to escalate our foundation and shape them. Um, that's how I've run other organizations when I'm in leadership, is that, you know, you've gotta take a, a lay of the land and not put the cart before the horse, look at ways where we, which you can build efficiency. Um, once you've laid that foundation, then you can build upon it. And so, it's gonna take some more citizenry input, um, some more communication with our citizens about key priorities. Um, that's been asked, uh, from the audience as well, um, and then also shaping that into work when we make some policy changes. If we don't do that, if we just say, we're just gonna shape growth, we're gonna invite all of our friends because we're good at building relationships business-wise, um, we will be bulldozered in the future. And we won't know what the city of Leander looks like fifteen years from now. And so, I think that is just my, my skill set and professional approach to how we start this process of building in the right direction and shaping our city.
Okay. Um, again, uh, my strategic approach, right? So, and again, we can go to the depth, one selected and everything, but the strategic approach that I would take is, there's something called as long-range planning. I put the map of Leander before me, I see where I want certain developments to be, long-range, that works for everyone, where I want my commercial to be, where I want my residential to be, where I want certain niche things that regionally attract people to be. And how does they kind of look at regionally to wrong draw, to the videos, to talk to, and everything, and how can we bring in them? First, the second piece of it is always infrastructure first that supports the growth. Not like get some piece of it accepted and tailored without having the right infrastructure. When I say that, it's the water, it's the wastewater, which is much more important, and as well as the roads, so that there is no congestion, signals, everything. Now, if anyone has an urgency, then let them pay the city to do that, in the way that the city wants it, in the public interest. That's how I would approach it in short with the bank that I have. I can speak forever, but that's how I would approach it. Long-range planning strategically, looking how we want the map of Leander, look for everyone, not now, but ten years from now. Second is intentionally bringing the infrastructure first and then plan your road based on. That's how I would answer.
EDC is zoning.
Perfect.
Of course, we have land zoning in our city, and like we try to keep this direction. Also, we have CAP plans, and we have specific budget to do, like, all this stuff. So, about North Line Project, I know they changed their project a couple times, yeah, a couple of times. And that's why it's like timeline just, because each change, like small change in the project needs again time to be approved and begin. So, what we have to do, we have to work for, and it's, and to make it easy and again, and maybe the timeline, we will be sure before all like changes in the projects. So what we have to really have to work for, and to make it easy, and again, and maybe the timeline, we will get shortly for all, like, changes in the projects.
Can I ask you one stuff? Please. Natale had mentioned, like, not putting the cart before the horse. And I think part of the frustration, I don't even know if this is a question, but I think the part of the frustration is that it was so broad. We advertised and marketed that this development is coming, everyone should get really excited about it, and then nothing keeps happening. And so talking about putting the cart before the horse, I don't know who's in charge of communications at the city council or at the planning committee or whatever, but maybe address that when we get there? Because advertising that this big growth opportunity is coming to the city and its reasons to move here.
Yes.
Because it's gonna increase your property value and all these things, and then it just doesn't happen, and it doesn't happen, and you end up with disruptive people.
And you heard me say.
Completely agree. I, I live by North Line, so I'm still waiting as well for that development, because I was like, that's gonna help me incrementally on my equity. And so I was like, yeah, this is a good spot. And then, you know, you kind of wait, but I think it's a lot of putting the horse in the alley.
And I also bought the house by the advertisements, with secondary, labor, and something else. But right now, the reality, not to the difference, especially after COVID and after the drought. So we have a lot of different type of problem, um, problem, and it's, like, the fast growth. So it's mean, it's snowballs of problems which we have to pass and solve over the future.
Yeah. So as I called it, right, exactly on your point, infrastructure first, then comes the development. The second, yes, the second piece of it is the, the Laguna project, right? Without the resources, our reliable resources, it, it cannot happen, right? So those are some examples.
And we appreciate the enthusiasm and all the questions, and everybody's been here as lazy as they can on Friday evening. There are signs that the candidates have brought, I'm sure they wouldn't mind if you feel strongly about a candidate to take a sign home with it. They'll probably find more if they run out. Um, but thank you all for coming, thank you to the candidates, thank you for your, your desire to grow and, and, you know, have Leander be the best place possible. Thank you.